And it is now 6:00 PM. Sorry. We're gonna get going. Good evening. A call to order the regular meeting of the Lancaster Select Board for Monday, October 21st, 2024. First, a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast thanks to our friends that's still on Lancaster Community Television. We will start with a roll call. Mr. Allison, who is remote?
Here.
Mr. Gifford?
Here.
And Mr. Kerrigan, we are all here. Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for our meeting of September 16th. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for September 16th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Although he was absent due to COVID, I will second for purposes of discussion.
So I will second.
Okay.
Because you weren't here.
Thank you.
Do you wish to have a discussion for minutes for a meeting?
I, I, no.
Great, okay. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Any abstentions?
Yes, I'm abstaining.
Let the record reflect Ralph abstained because he was absent. Okay. Next item on our agenda is we have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to finalize some FY26 capital budget draft plan. I know you all have discussed this, so first, before we do anything, we will let you call your meeting to order and do your, your...
Call the meeting to order of Finance Committee, October 21st, joint with the Board of Selectmen by taking a roll call. Emily?
Here.
Stan, not here, not.
Just in the period.
Here.
And Dick, we have a quorum. I'd also like to turn it back to the Board of Selectmen and allow you to ask directly to our members, don't need to go through me.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So I think we'll have a good free-flowing conversation, but I know this is really designated a time for you all to, to have a conversation with us about your thoughts about the plan. Kate, do you want to run through top notes of the plan for us so that we can...
Yeah, I can just share. I know you likely have it in front of you, but just for everybody else's. So this is the updated plan that was changed with putting some highlights in and some other markers after the last Finance Committee meeting, which, forgive me, I forget the date. Were, is three weeks ago perhaps?
It's one, three weeks ago.
More weeks.
Could have been, yes, sorry.
So whatever the last one was. So the Finance Committee went through all of the, all of the requests again. A lot of the staff were able to talk about that. It was a really good meeting, a robust discussion. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a, on the bubble is the concept of, you know, it, there, we weren't talking about the project's worthiness, but just whether we have the inclination to fund it this year or defer it to another. So in what you will be seeing and what I sent to you all, the, the bubble is highlighted in yellow. There was a discussion about placing the fire escape replacement that needed to happen on, at the Old Town Hall on the bubble due to the fact that it was uncertain whether or not we wanted to pursue closing the Old Town Hall sort of indefinitely until there was some other plan. I had told the, the board that I would look into some of the costs associated with that. So it's hard to piece out what the exact cost is for just one building because we get a, you know, a group. But right now, we aren't insuring any buildings that are vacant, and we would be required to insure any building, including if it was vacant, and the rate for the insurance is higher if the building is vacant. But we couldn't get around, we couldn't get away with not insuring it because it's still a town asset. And so that, that isn't really much of a savings. As a matter of fact, it could potentially have an increase. And so the, the insurance company had said that they would not recommend doing that. The energy that that building uses is predominantly covered by our solar field, our municipal solar field, so the savings there would be as much as we're saving the money that we're getting there, and we could transfer the wrecks that we have to other entities. So of course, that would be a savings. The big one is the heating oil. It's very, very expensive. Last year, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to nine thousand, and that was using it, you know, sparingly for a couple of community events, fundraisers, obviously for voting and things associated with that. But there were, there, there are not a great deal of things that happen in there.
Do we pay, do we, when we use the school? Do we have to rent it? Since we own it, do we have to rent it?
For town meeting?
For town meeting?
Town meeting or...
No, we don't.
Or vote it?
We don't use it for voting because there's school.
We don't currently, but what I'm getting at is if we didn't use it here...
I don't think we can because there's school. The space we would need would be a gymnasium or something like that, and they would, they have school.
How did they use the show, how did they use center school in Stone?
So, um, center school, so the election is on a Saturday in Stone.
In Stone.
So that's how they get, so it's, it's possible. The only thing is, is that our town code has a very definite day of the, the second Monday. So if you were going to entertain any other day for voting, you'd have to change the town code. So that, that isn't going to happen in FY26.
Now, I'm just trying to find some way that we can get that, so it doesn't freeze, but it doesn't cost us much money. Is there another location that, that is available to us for, quote, less money? Than opening that building and heating it twice a year or whatever?
You know, I wouldn't want to speak for...
Hold on. So that would only, so that would only solve for town elections. So at, at each, like this November, we, we don't control on the presidential election.
Right, right, okay.
When the state primaries take place, we don't control that. So it only control one election a year in May. That's it.
Eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it isn't much money, so I understand what you're saying.
Look, I, I'd love to not spend eight thousand dollars on it either, but, but I just want to make sure we're not trying to find a solution for something that's outside of the school.
This may be a topic for the future.
Right, right. But I, I think the principle the Finance Committee was going toward is that we felt like, let's minimize the cost of what we're spending on the Old Town Hall because we use it so infrequently, and look into other, other venues we could use for those couple of events. So I guess, I guess that's kind of the question. Is there a way that we can shift and everything out of there and just absolutely minimize the cost?
And what you were trying to eliminate was spending money on the, the...
I, I think the heating is the only thing.
So not the fire escapes? I thought that was the issue. Because that's, heating is an operational expense. This is a capital expense. I just want to make sure we stay focused on...
Right, and I think the first thought was, let's minimize the capital expense. Can we save the eighty thousand dollars or not spend it? And then auxiliary expenses that drive from not using the...
That I understand. I just want to, for the sake of a packed agenda, I want to make sure we stay focused on the things that are in a capital budget and not the operating.
Right. So I, I think the question is, is there any way we can avoid spending eighty thousand for the, for the fire escape at the Old Town Hall?
I don't think so. I, I don't, look, I don't want to do it either.
It has to be done before the election, I thought.
Well, no. The DPW fixed it enough that it was able to get through. However, this year, we're due to have the inspection from the engineer. And if I were a betting person, which I'm not, but I would bet that it likely would not pass inspection just due to the age, and will need something, including maybe it all comes off, it gets sandblasted, it gets put back on, maybe that's not exactly eighty thousand dollars, or it, the whole structure needs to be redone. The only way to avoid that is to not allow any member of the public in the building. So that, that, that's to answer the question, and that's a policy, obviously a policy.
Right, right. And post this election, or as soon as we can figure out where, how to move our elections, is that possible?
Well, what's also possible is this is a draft plan for capital. This is a guidance for us, right? And so it's also possible before we decide to spend money, we make a different policy decision because we've come up with a solution.
The thing what you're saying is, right now, it is sufficient and covered.
Yes.
And when is the inspection?
Um, it'll probably be around the first of the year. The first of the year.
First of the year. And what happens if we fail?
Then we either have to replace it, or we have to not allow anyone in the building.
Okay.
Other than like staff, if we need to go...
We did get it approved last year, and it is, if, if it were needed, could it be used?
It can be used right now, yes. Yep. No, we did not, it did not get inspected last year.
Right, did not get inspected last year.
Okay.
Like every three.
That's a lot of money to fix still.
Sure.
Right, and, and I think a lot of money to fix something at the Town Hall, which we're seeing diminishing, and we would say cut off all use of it.
Well, at some point, we have to decide, are we cutting off all use of the building forever? And that's, I don't think, a, a decision we're willing to make right now, because I think there's still potential that we could, we could preserve the building and use it for stuff in the future. So my suggestion is that we approve when necessary, you know, reasonable amount of money up to that eighty thousand dollars to fix those things and make it an accessible space. Because if, I don't think we have a problem, we don't, if we fail, which we likely would in January, without a plan to fix it, we won't be able to have our elections because we won't have time to change our code to move it from, from Monday to a Saturday. And there's significant pushback, rightly so, from folks who believe a Saturday election is disenfranchising, folks who have religious reasons why they can't go.
Right, right.
There's lots of open questions. The, the, the question that needs to be closed is, are we willing to say that under the right circumstances, we are willing to expend resources on these fire escapes if we absolutely need to?
However, the real question is not whether we are paying more for insurance versus eight thousand, it's paying less for insurance versus eighty, eighty-eight thousand.
Sure, but we still have to solve the problems of where to do, yeah. So there's, we could spend hours going through all the scenarios of best ways to save the...
Right, but I don't want to walk away with the idea that it's only eight thousand we're saving. We would not have to spend the eighty thousand if we closed it down.
But, oh, yeah, right, yep.
So it's really eighty-eight thousand.
But then, but then we're making a decision not to heat a building that was a gift to the town 120 years ago from their family. We're not making, we're, we're sort of deciding to mothball the whole space, which is going to then lead to, if we ever do decide to do something with it, which I think we should, even more expensive. So I think it's a little bit of a, it's a much larger than a penny, but penny-wise bound foolish on, at least in terms of this capital draft plan.
Could, could we ask Kate to please see if there was another place, say at AUC, or something to hold an election to rent?
I mean, AUC, I don't think is on the map because they're all totally shuttered.
It's all closed.
Or someplace.
We could certainly look at it. But again, like saying we support this now, it is again, still a capital draft plan. As we all know, things move around. We won't etch your name in stone saying Dick wanted to spend eighty thousand dollars on, but I do think it's just, it's more of a directional sense to Kate and the team here. Want to just shut the building down entirely or invest in fire escapes.
And I think from a, from a directional sense, the last discussion of Finance Committee was, we want to go toward the route of closing the building down. We recognize you may have to be some mothball plan and some evaluation for future use and all those kinds of things, and somebody could deal with that, but we wanted to go that direction.
And just to make the record known, I was not in agreement with that.
And just to be very clear, what you guys do is make a recommendation on a direction.
Yes, agreed.
And we appreciate the recommendation, which is why we seek recommendations on the capital items to expand. So I think we're, we're further down the road on any recommendation, whether it comes officially from you all or not, on mothballing the building, but want to get a sense on this item because there's others that we have to consider, so...
And what is your sense that you have?
From you all, I don't know. I honestly don't know. So, I mean, barring any recommendation, we're just going to move forward with the Select Board's recommendation of doing it.
Do we question procedurally then, do we need to make a motion, Dick? What do we need to...
No, I'm not, no, we're not into motions and votes tonight on this thing. I want to keep it open so that we are not bound by anything we've voted on.
Well, I want to be very clear. When we leave here, we have to give her direction. She's going to be bound by what we give her when we leave here. So you can say you're not bound by it, but we...
But it's also not our decision. We're just making our...
I guess my end...
We don't, we, my opinion would be to spend money on the fire escapes because I think it was...
What's your opinion?
My opinion would be to absolutely see if we can avoid spending that money and move toward the direction of closing the building down with whatever planning we have to do to deal with that approach.
Spending money, in my opinion, and so you've got all the opinions, okay, is to move forward with spending the money subject to investigating the other possibilities that I suggested.
All right. Do you have any questions? I mean, we're here to hear them, but do you have anything?
I just want to make sure I'm properly understanding the document. As I understand it, as laid out, we would have...
Yeah, we already did.
Oh.
Yeah.
So it is...
We're here to hear from them. We already did the capital. But if you have a thoughts, then...
I can explain the document.
I just wanted to, okay, so I'm looking at the 10-year projections and our, the total amount of debt that we would be...
Oh, so that's the debt plan. So we're on just the outlay plan, which is non-debt. So it'd be the first tab.
First tab.
And it has like all these little squares that are different colors?
Yep.
That's it. So this is non-borrowing.
Right.
Does that help?
Yes.
Uh, okay. Next, let's see. Well, there's a library discussion relative to debt, which we can come back to. There is a very nice, the Public Safety Commissioner on behalf of the Fire Department removed the request for an all-terrain vehicle for thirty-five thousand, so that would be removed. I left it here on the plan only in purple so that we could give credit where credit is due for those firefighters who have taken that off. So that will be, that will be gone, and I can fix that. Other bubble, sorry. Uh, the building improvements for the community center was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the HVAC systems. And so unfortunately, we would not be eligible, since the last meeting, we're not eligible for the Green Communities for that because the project isn't big enough. So that would be the full one hundred and thirty that we would have to spend, which it was on the bubble. This may put it off the bubble. So anyway, I'll let you guys talk to that. And then the other one that was on the bubble was to regrade and pave the parking area at Prescott. And we were mostly focusing on at the bottom of the hill of the community center to add some more ADA parking there and to grade the area at the end. We had a, a couple of people unfortunately drive over the end. We need to put some kind of guard rail system there so a car can't go over into the wetlands. And that was on the bubble, and that was for thirty thousand. So those are the other two outlay bubbles.
Anyone on the committee have any, on the thirty thousand, any comment on thirty thousand?
I would do whatever the minimum we have to do for safety requirements there and cut it off, stop at that point.
I agree, yeah. I think if it's a safety hazard, it, it should be done.
And I agree also.
Okay. Take that off the bubble.
However, orange cones could be safety.
Well, you left it up for interpretation, so we'll take that...
We leave it to the safety experts.
Have to step up from the orange cones.
We leave it to the safety experts to decide what that is.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate that.
And the one thirty, I don't want to fill in, but have we popped the bubble? I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
If you're on the bubble? If you're on the bubble, it means it could go either way.
It could go either way. I, I would, I would defer then and not expend that money because it was really a question of how much do we get back and what, what is the net cost? If the net cost is really a hundred and thirty thousand, given the issues we face for the first year of the new high school expenses, I would defer that expense.
So the only thing I will add is that I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we were going to be going from oil to an electric. And so the electricity is paid for through the solar field. So there would be a savings to that, but it, would it be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? No, it would not.
No, I understand, but I would still...
I just, I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, and I would just like, if it's a lot of money, the cost may go up. We're going to have to eventually, so I just want to...
Right, and we're, right.
The cost could go up, but that's in time. We hear what you're saying. Okay. So those are the only bubble ones. Then we go into debt stuff, debt company?
Yeah, so I, how do you want to, do you want to just tell me at the end? We'll go straight through?
Yeah.
Okay. So then moving to, so let me, it doesn't let me stop from one to another, so hold on. So if we can go to the debt plan now, let me just...
Jason, if you have any questions, I'm not watching the screen, so just speak up. Okay. I did see your thumbs. Okay.
Unless this isn't terribly big.
I can see every number.
Hardy har.
Hardy har har.
Yeah, so... Okay. So just for the, I guess, the key, the red is proposed. It certainly hasn't received any votes. This is just things that the group was knocking around a little bit. So one that had come up was potentially looking at a debt for five point five million dollars for the library. I believe that the, I believe that the director and at least one member of the trustees is here that can...
Cheryl is in the back.
Speak about that project. So the Finance Committee asked that we go through and talk with Hilltop Securities, which is our bond lender. They came back and provided us with an estimate based on a 20-year loan. I can obviously get estimates for any time. We could do 30 years, you can do 10 years. They're averaging right now at three point five percent. It was thought of that that was nearly unheard of. The staff, myself and Cheryl, agreed, and, and we pressed them on it. They sent a memo that I shared with both groups that, you know, this was based on their projections, and so, you know, you kind of don't know until you go out for the debt. So anyway, I put that, that is a change from last time. I didn't anticipate there would be any talk of five point five million, not that, not that there shouldn't be, I just didn't put it in there. So, so that's new, just for, as a purpose of discussion. The fire leases for the mini pumper and the Class A are on here. So those start in FY27, so they add to the total debt, starting in FY27. The nice thing about that, if there can be a nice thing about debt, is that debt will be coming off by then, so the, the delta is pretty much the same. The Mary Rollinson and Luther Burbank Building Project will be coming off this year, as will the old high school debt, just in time for the new high school debt. So the, we paid the last payment and the first payment in the same year, which is fun. So we're moving up to that. The only big thing I would say is, again, these are projected based on what the high school is saying when they go for their next borrowing, but understand that when we get up in the FY28 range, we're talking about a four million dollar debt payment. So I just want to...
Which is substantial.
Yeah, which I just, I just want to level set, not to discourage anything else. I just feel like that's going to be a big, big thing for, for folks. So just to have that as you discuss the rest. And Joe, what did I miss?
Well, I was surprised to see this on the agenda. I'm grateful to see if it gets on the warrant. And, you know, we're going to do a full press, you know, transparency, get stuff on the website, and apply for grants where we can. Probably after July, we can apply for Green Communities. I'm going to put in a CPA, and let's see what we can get done. I, I also took a lot out of it. I took all elective stuff out of it, so this is just building. It's all it is. So there are no new services, no new improvements other than to fix and replace.
If, oh, sorry. Yeah, my only question is, if we don't move forward with the entire five point five million dollar bond, given the townspeople, they're just going to start absorbing the new high school expense. If we don't, is there a preference for you and the Board of Library Trustees for how to stage it and what to do first? So if we could do a piece of it, first of all?
Well, sure. We, we'd be happy to look into that. It's just hard to make plans without having any knowledge of that first phase. Once we know what's going to happen in Phase One, we can then move to the other phases and figure out what's going to happen down the line.
I guess I'm asking what Phase One would be.
My question. My question is the maintenance of the building.
Yeah.
Not maintenance, but maintaining the building.
Yeah.
The integrity of it, the leaks. And at best, I can tell here...
Yep.
From your, maybe you want to enlighten me some. I see somewhere around a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for, uh, maybe I'm in the wrong place, that's openings. What, what will it take to repair all of the leaks?
In the roof? I think we talked about...
Two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is not it? Six oh four?
It's like a million dollars, let's call it.
Nine hundred and eleven thousand.
No, that was nine hundred and eleven last time.
Well, I, I'm just saying, like, you know, you call it nine hundred and eleven, I, that's fine. I meant in the neighborhood, I didn't actually...
But in your breakdown here, you've got two hundred and forty-eight thousand and a hundred and ninety-five thousand, if I'm correct. The two forty-eight is for masonry, cutting point of bridge.
Yep, tuck, tuck pointing, etc. Yep.
Okay, now where, where is the thermal and, where is the snow, etc.?
It's right down in Section Seven.
I see thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at this now, and the numbers... Looks like it's a lot less, actually.
Yes, that, that's my point.
I mean, it actually looks like now, it's like four hundred thousand.
Look, we just saved a half a million bucks.
Look at that. I don't know where I got that nine hundred and eleven thousand.
Well, we might assume that it's correct, but from what I see here...
I must have included something. Oh, you know what else I included? So, um, section, Division One, which is another hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What, what, you think you can get away with four hundred thousand dollars is what I'm saying?
Well, you need Division One because you need a way to dispose of stuff and...
Where am I seeing Division One?
Right at the top, Dick.
Hundred and sixty-three?
Actually, yeah, which is actually fifty-eight. So that's going to also include the staging if you were going to do the roof?
Here's why I'm asking.
Yep.
If we go for five-five, that's three and a half percent. Forget in the first year.
Yeah, yeah.
It's three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars per year that we're going to owe for 20 years.
That's for all in?
And that's, we'll do everything, and we'll get it three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for all years. If this year...
Yep.
Just this year, not, not, not in the future, but just this year, we can get away with less than three hundred, four hundred thousand because the first year is a higher payment. We, we could possibly put this off for a year.
The whole, the whole thing?
And, and protect the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, the other thing that I'm looking at is, and I, I need this, the operating budget too, because my, my estimate, no analysis, my estimate of possible free cash from this year may be between four and five hundred thousand dollars. I'm wondering if we can't get away with that to get the building secure, not, not obligate the public to three and four hundred thousand dollars for 20 years, and maybe rates go down a year from now. They may go up too, but maybe they go down. I'm trying to find some way to get that building saved and usable and, and, and not commit the public to a long-term expensive rate at this point. I don't think we'll get below three point five, but we... I don't think we'll get below 3.5, but we might.
Well, Dick.
I'm leaving you up in here, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. No, let's just talk about what we're talking about now.
Yeah, I just disagree. I think it would be, should not go with the 3.5 right now.
There's no, no better project in my mind than the library, however.
I know, Dick.
Can we afford to do it, and can we afford to?
Right. Dick, if you guys said, hey, this year we can only do the roof, we'd be grateful, and we'd get the roof. You know, I mean, if.
Well, I'd like to do the masonry too, because you've got.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
And that's gonna freeze it.
All those things, you know. Yeah, we're happy, we understand the town situation. So however the town can help us, help the community, help the building.
And I'm only talking for one year, because I want that, how many years have we talked about the carpet, for instance? I mean, it's gotta be at least 10. So we will get back and get that. But right now.
You better be on finance next year. My institution. So the fallback really is, honestly, whatever the town can afford, we'll figure out something that we can do off of this project.
What we're trying to compare is this year, for the library, we're either gonna spend $400,000 on a long-term loan, or maybe $300,000 to $350,000 on a short-term free cash.
Right, and just for a frame of reference, the debt payment is about, for a house valued at $550, in Lancaster, it'd be about $154 additional taxes a year. 28 cents on the thousand.
No, I. We just haven't done the upgrading budget, which is going to include the school, which is $1.5 million right there.
Could we double check that calculation because of a $4 million increase in budget?
No, this is the 387,000.
This is just for the.
Oh, for the 387, I'm sorry.
Just for the library.
Right, on the 4 million. 387,000 per year, additional to the taxpayers, would be about $154 for a house valued at $550.
But, but the two points do interact, because we need to look at what the overall impact is.
I was not trying to give a microeconomics lesson to the crowd. I was just trying to give them a general sense of what.
Yeah, whereas the cost of that one specific item is, I'll take your number is probably representative. But by the time we add in that we have to pay for the school, which will run.
No, no, I know. That was on top of all the other stuff. So I mean, I really want to do the library, but I think we need to at least give you the sense that we're gonna secure the building by doing what Dick's talking about.
Absolutely.
We need, I think that tonight, we need to let Kate and Joe know what we really think we're gonna do.
At the bare minimum.
Because, I mean, we've held them up in there too long.
It doesn't mean that we, I mean, at least for me, if we determine that we want to bring the project to the full-time meeting, we can still do that, right? To bond in May?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, of course, you can, you can do that.
But we want you to leave here early.
Makes it a little tricky with the budget, just missing a really big piece.
Well, it's October 21st, so we've got time to continue to have this conversation. But I think you at least need to know notionally what direction.
Right, but I think my sense is, and I think that the sense of the discussion we had the last finance committee was, we were in favor of securing the building and doing the roof and the tuck pointing, okay, to whether to secure the building. And then not making a commitment at this time on the whole $5.5 million, because there are so many other parts of the budget that we need to look at comprehensively, because of the impact, as you're saying, in terms of what it's gonna cost the average homeowner. So barring that, the best decision we can make is, let's secure the building, we'll commit those funds, and defer the decision on the larger multi-year expenditure.
Which we use the magic word, defer, because what they're proposing is not making it into the Taj Mahal. They want it to be the great library it is. We're gonna have to do this work.
Yeah, understood.
But the reality of the impact on taxpayers is important, and we have to.
Very, very important.
Because when we do go to the taxpayers, you want them on your side.
Finance committee.
That's right.
Was split, because when you had that discussion, Stan and Emily were in the other way, so.
Yeah, we both said if it was 3.5, that we would move forward with 3.5.
Which is the only thing that we need a little bit of direction on, because absent another member, you have a tie.
Incidentally, I'd like to announce, we have no more application for people to join the finance committee. If anyone here or anyone listening would like to, please speak up.
It's so much fun to get to do things like that. So while you guys are waiting for Stan to materialize or figure out how to break a tie, thoughts?
Yeah, this was on the debt, debt plan tab. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, that on the totals, which, for example, today were, today were just over 2 million total debt. I say today in fiscal year '25.
'26.
You did today, like this year?
Literally now, but you don't.
Yes.
Okay, and then that goes, like in fiscal year '28, that goes up to just over 5.5. Goes from basically a little over 2 million to 5.5 million. And everything in that number is already committed, except for what's in red on this spreadsheet, which is the library.
Correct.
And further, for example, in fiscal year '28, of that 5.5 million, 4 million of it is for the new school.
Correct.
Right. I think what that means is.
Don't want you to do things like that.
How about this?
You can slip into it just if you want.
How about this? Our hands are tied. Because we have a huge amount of debt already committed. And this is why the angst, I think everybody wants to see that library get fixed. That's, that's a no-brainer. We don't want to see it deteriorate. The question is, how are we gonna pay for it? And. And I was gonna say, I like the idea of doing what we can now. Continue to work to bring in some additional tax review, and that could help us down the road.
Okay.
Jason, do you have any comments you want to make? You don't need to, if you.
No, no, I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna be pretty consistent, which is, we can't, we can't afford a lot of this. So, you know, we just build a new high school, pass it over, I can't imagine us doing it. The residents want more money, so.
Can I have one more comment?
Sure.
Roy.
Yes.
Roy and Dick, could we get it to 500,000?
I mean, it's about projects, not about dollars.
Well, this is the roof, and the roof comes in at about 4.70.
I think you hit gold when they said, do the roof and like, secure the roof.
If, if that's what the number from. Okay, we'll take the 500. I would take the 500.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any?
No.
It was not about.
Well, what do we just decide?
Well, I think the sense of, at least the majority of the finance committee, and the sense of the majority of the select board, is to work to do the first phase, whatever that is, securing the roof and whatever.
And the cost of that is?
Is.
Five?
Roughly five, estimated right now at 500,000.
Why don't I suggest this, that Joe work with Kate, come up with what is now a new Phase 1, and then we can all bless it and move forward from there. But that's the general sense you're getting from us, is, number one, we'd love to do everything all at once. Two, very hard to do with all the debt, but number three, we want to make sure we secure the building, so.
So just to be clear, the roof for 500,000 would then come back into the L.A. plan, which is inside the levy, so it changes the amount here. So at some point, there'll need to be a discussion about how to fund that, either through free cash, or because our, our goal was not to raise inappropriate.
Well, we haven't discussed the whole CPA aspect of it. Because it is eligible for CPA.
It is.
And it can be bonded in CPA. So there is long-term financing on that, if it's big enough.
I would argue, the first question is figure out what it is, and what its cost is. And then if you can come up with some options for how to fund it, preferably without borrowing, and preferably without raising inappropriate. But, so, at least you have notional guidance on the direction we're heading. We all are roughly on this. We're somewhere in the same book, at least, if not on the same page. All right. Anything else?
It breaks my heart to do that, guys.
You were the one, no kidding.
I know.
That's how he gets to Joe. He says, no, you can't have it, and then he tells you it breaks his heart.
It does, it does. Sorry.
I know where Rob's heart is in life, right?
No, no, I'm sorry, Dick.
A couple of questions about the new high school debt?
Can we, can we hold on, because that's not part of this capital plan? So let's just see if there's any more to discuss in that, and then we can go to that. But then we've got a bunch of other things on our agenda. So if the joint meeting purposes was dealt with, then I'd like to be able to move on if we can, but go ahead.
The water, they were gonna come back, and I think that I saw, Scott, yep, Scott's on the call. And I think he can unmute. Yep.
Scott? We're dealing with the water. The water building?
Scott's gonna talk to us.
The water building.
Well, from the debt, the borrowing, so the water department had.
For the $100,000?
Uh, no, it was initially 4 million.
The 4 million?
And I think it's gonna be less than that.
I have questions on that when I come to question time.
Okay.
Well, let's hear what's got us to say, and then we'll get to question time. Scott?
Yeah, right now, we're exploring our different options, whether to go with the 4 million, possibly going for two, and just doing, doing two at a time and working that way. We're thinking of different funding sources, grants, Chapter 90, all that stuff. Been trying to get a number on, in a payback schedule. We've still, we evidently still can't work on it for the moment.
Sorry, so this is for the water pipe replacement, yes?
Water main upgrade.
Any questions?
Yes.
Take your light.
Okay. I got a breakdown from Scott on the amount, the actual breakdown, and the lineal feet. It comes to $3,593,000 for 6100 lineal feet. That's a 589.02 per lineal foot. However, it is broken down into four units. Chase Hill would be 42.6% or 2,600 square feet. Neck Road would be 36.1% or 2,200 square feet. Seven Bridges would be 900 square feet, or 14.8%. And Harvard Road would be 400 lineal feet and 6.6%. When you break that down, you can come out to fixing quite a bit with the current free cash or retained earnings of the water enterprise. I don't like the idea, unless this is an all-or-nothing question, which I don't see how it could be, because it isn't one continuous route they're all gonna break down. Why aren't, haven't they come back, or why aren't we considering improving the water condition for as many people as possible with a respectful use of free cash? I don't want to drain free cash from water enterprise. But if it's about 2.5, my best estimate of recollection, why not spend a million five and get, you could get Neck Road and Seven Bridges done, or Neck Road, Seven Bridges, and Harvard Road done. We need to have a plan where we are meeting the water requirements and health requirements of the people living there. I don't know how many homes it services, but we can't do 4 million unless the town likes to do it.
But didn't the town elect to do it?
And the town.
Yeah.
We'd like to do it, the town made it a couple of years ago. They've already elected to do it.
Well, if we continue to elect to want to do it, or zero.
They don't have the retained earnings to make a payment.
Right, right. That I understand, but the town, but the town has elected to do it.
My question is, is there another way to break into a process problem until they charge enough to do it in the future?
Right, right, and I think that's the point, that we need to look at these items comprehensively. We can't just look at, did we at one point in time say we wanted to do this number? We have to look at, can we afford it? And will the retained earnings pay for it? If they won't, because the town is responsible for a default by the water department, I understand, then we have to say, wait a minute, this isn't a good plan, we shouldn't do that. And I think that's the issue, question here, is, can they pay for it? And Kate, you were gonna look at that, have we had any clarity on the ability to pay for it through increased rates?
Just to update folks watching at home in this room. A number of, a number of, a number of town meetings ago, the water department proposed to the town a plan for $4 million for a number of roads for water main improvements. And they were gonna go out and bond the money to make these improvements. This was even before I was on the board, so, two plus years ago.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Feels like a longer time every day, but it was a while ago. And because there's a problem with the return, retained earnings, which is what they get in payments for water in town, can't actually pay the bonding cost. Basically, what you're making doesn't pay the bill. We have not gone forward with doing the whole project, because that seems fiscally irresponsible. So we're trying to find a way to tackle the issues that Dick has talked about, which is improving the water mains where we need to. And I will say, when they put them in a list, because these are part of a long plan to do all of the water mains in town, and they had categorized the roads they had listed at the top of this plan as the top priority, from a water quality perspective. So we just are trying to figure out how to get to that, without, again, dealing with the fact that.
I understand why this is not a health issue, if nothing else.
Well, that's why they started it, with the roads that they proposed doing, other ones that need the improvement the most from a health perspective. But it being a health issue, as someone who works in healthcare, trust me, it doesn't mean they just pay for it. You still need the money to dig the hole and put the pipe in and do all that.
Yes, well, well pointed.
So that's the back-of-the-envelope assessment of how we got to where we are. So we're just trying to figure that out. It's nice to have an actual audience of people here, so thank you very much for coming. So what answers do you need from us tonight?
I feel like you asked a question.
My question, yeah, it is a question.
It came in 38 parts, but he did ask it.
Was it the retained earnings? So according to last year's tax recap, they have, the water department has like 3.2 million.
Well, because the attitude used to be 2.58.
It was, yeah, and then they actually ended up, I, here, they used it, which would make sense, because that coincides with the debt plan. So I think they paid off the one loan this last year. And so there is an ability to have, but I don't think it's a $4 million capacity. I think they could.
But Scott was talking about breaking it into pieces and maybe doing them.
Yeah, I don't know how much they're looking to raise the rates either.
Well, to do the job at 600 square feet, 600 dollar per lineal foot, we can get three-quarters of this job done, and still won't have a million dollars round figure in free cash. And I would like to see if they would come, why, why make their, I don't understand. Why haven't they come to us for a breakdown of this, as opposed to the all-or-nothing issue?
So, I mean, I think I heard Scott say that they're looking at options.
Different options, yes.
They're still looking at different options. And so I think, well, Scott, the message we send back to you, to the commissioners, is, let's come up with some options, send them to us, so we can talk through them. We want to have progress, we just have to figure out how the best of it.
So, so how have we helped you? We haven't helped you at all.
Given her so much guidance.
Well, this one is, this one is sticky, only because the first iteration of the budgets are due 31st of this month, so. I mean, if they're working on it, they're working on it.
First iteration, I'm sorry, the first iteration of our budgets?
Department budgets.
Well, of the department budgets.
Okay.
Where we crush everyone's dreams privately, and then we do it publicly.
We hope they reframe their dreams, and then crush them.
Right, right.
All right, so more work to be done on it.
So, finance committee has what, what is your hope?
My, I hope is I'd like to see a, a smaller percentage of the total project proposed that lives within that, the Monday that's got.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
And I would like this more.
That's way, way leaning towards the $2 million side of it right now.
See, again, the half million before, 2 million here. I mean, we're just saving mine left, right, and center. That's great, thanks, Scott. Do you have any? Jason, anything? Okay, good. All right. All right, do you feel like you've got something else on that?
Absolutely.
And so, uh, any, how about any remaining items, debt or otherwise, on the capital plan?
No, uh, no, you all talked.
I had a couple of quick questions. One is, when we had our discussion, there was a point made about the DPW building having water leaks and we wanted to do something about that. And I don't see it in this plan. Has it been removed or did I just miss it?
It wasn't, that's what I thought initially was the building because it was like for the roofing.
Yes, right, exactly.
So you all talked about that and Scott was able to tell you that, like, a lot of what it was, it was old, actually, it might have been dug. The chair had said it was really needed to happen, it was years past and whatever. So my understanding, unless I got that wrong, was that it was off the bubble and-
And into the do.
In the bubble, I don't know. It was in the yes column, it was in the yes column, not in the-
I, I, I think much like with the, with the library, we wanted to preserve the building for use.
Right.
Right. So, so we didn't talk about it tonight because I thought it was a bad word.
Right, okay, fine, I just didn't, didn't see it here. I have another question, yes, relative to the, the school number that's in here. I understand these are your best projections.
Yes.
And I understand that and I appreciate the fact that you have given us your best projections and the multi-year aspect of that. Thank you, that's the right thing to do for it. Question, when will we hear from the school committee in terms of any update? Okay.
So their initial budget sessions are going to begin next month in November.
Okay.
And so they're due to get us at least an initial projection by the first of the year. And the reason this is a little different than, in the last two years, we had had that, that long meeting that was on a Saturday.
Yes.
In November, and while the year that we had the override, that was good because we really dug into everything last year, we didn't have all of the information because we didn't have the school, we didn't have our free cash certified, and we had yet to really set the tax rate. And so this year, we put that back in January so that the hope would be that we will have at least their preliminary number by the time we meet in January. January twenty-ninth.
That's when we're doing our group meeting.
So January twenty-ninth is?
It's Wednesday, we're doing a joint meeting of both these boards and department heads will come in and present their budgets.
And, okay, that, two, two questions, okay? That seems late in the schedule.
So I'm gonna, A, she just told you why, what it was, where, when it was. B, we discussed it the last time we had a joint meeting. And C, there's a lot of people here for the next agenda item and this isn't about capital stuff. So if you want to talk to her about the schedule later, I just, we, we've supposed to been sitting here for an hour. So, um, we, and we agreed on the date when we had a joint meeting. We all took on our calendars. Or maybe we did that at the town meeting.
I don't recall.
Maybe we did the town meeting.
Okay, because I don't recall being present for that discussion.
I apologize if we didn't, but the reason why we're not doing it in November is exactly what Kate just laid out.
And their agreement highlights the dates, so.
Yeah.
Unless we want to renegotiate, which we could. We ask for the information, I think if they have it, they would provide it. I haven't been successful, but.
Okay.
Because I think they have a lot of moving pieces too, you know, so.
Good, good news for you is you're the next agenda item, but we put it as part of the meeting first. So are you all set?
Um, all right, we talked about the building.
Your finance committee meeting.
Motion to adjourn six fifty-four. Yeah. Motion to adjourn six fifty-four.
At six fifty-four, yeah.
Second.
Already had a discussion, no discussion? Roy?
No, no discussion.
Emily?
Yes.
Dick? Yes. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next item is Tax Fairness Committee Finalization and Acceptance of Committee Report. I thank you, Roy, for, I looked through the new version. I am in full agreement with the revisions, all set to go. So I don't think there needs to be, unless my colleagues have much of a discussion on it. Thank you, thanks once again to the Tax Fairness Committee for doing a fantastic job with the report. We will work hard, we will take a vote now to work, to produce it and distribute it, hopefully.
And we will print it in the book.
And they will print it and, and so, so thank you for that. So is there a motion to accept this version of the committee report and authorize Kate to produce and distribute through?
Let's all move.
So you-
Uh, any discussion?
So I looked at the report and in the appendix, it still mentions the version we read. I didn't see any line in it about what it means when somebody reads it. Am I missing something there?
Go ahead.
Okay, my understanding was we were just supposed to take all references to it out of the main report and to move it to an appendix. And we left the same wording that was original there and it's just there as-
That's what it is.
Yeah, is what it is.
Yeah. And I, I believe that was your recommendation.
Yes, that's-
And there is a disclaimer on the front though now that's more robust, that explains.
Yes, right, it's, it's clearly informational, it is not financial advice.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor, signal I've been saying aye, Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Gifford.
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all national numbers, okay. Now, um-
And now they're officially disbanded.
Yes, now. But this time for real.
He's holding the longest seat because he was the first one and you're the last one out.
All right, so folks, to, to, uh, where are we? Okay, we have public comment right now. And then we are gonna roll into our butter lot sales program. So public comment, we can't tell you what to say or how to say it or you can be mean to people in this, the Supreme Judicial Court says you can. I, but also it says I get to determine, or the board does, how long you get to say it. So, um, like, it's open to Lancaster residents to speak for two minutes on the topic of your choice. I'd like you to be nice to each other, but it's really entirely up to you. We will go to people who take the podium first and then we'll go to people online and state your name and address when you begin.
Good evening, Anne Ogilvie for Turner Lane. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that the select board vote no on the request for PJ Keating and Chisholm to waive the hearings for the renewal of their earth product removal permits. Earth product removal operations have huge impacts on our air, our drinking water and our environment. The permittees that have requested hearing waivers have both had concerning issues arise during their recent permit periods. The chemical perchlorate was found in a groundwater test well at PJ Keating and the Lancaster Board of Health was required to deal with a situation where the sand from Chisholm was blowing into the neighborhood next door and causing health concerns. These are important matters related to public health and our water supply and they merit discussion and review by our select board, who are the permit granting authority and are thus responsible for the due diligence on these permits. Hearings are also an opportunity for residents to voice their concerns and bring these matters forward to be addressed. Thank you for your consideration of a no vote on these permit waiver requests.
I also forgot to mention, if I go like this, let's just tell you you got one minute to go. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online? If you're online, throw your finger, your thumb up. Can someone get rid of that box so I can see at the top row? Okay, I see Frank has got his hand up, so we'll come to you in a second. Frank's up at the, no, our rules are you go to you first and-
Sounds good.
State name and address.
Justin Smith, also for Turner Lane. I am coming up also to respectfully request a no vote on waiving the permitting hearings. I feel like having permitting hearings as a public forum is a great way of transparency, being part of the process, allowing neighbors of these, well, actually, all, all Lancaster citizens having the opportunity to have a conversation with these permittees. There, it's a chance for them to be better neighbors, to inform us of what's going on and answer questions we might have. It allows us to be better neighbors by bringing ourselves to the conversation. And I feel it's an important consideration for the select board because they are ultimately the permitting authority and it's important that you be able to hold them to account for their responsibility in these permit requirements. So the, they have requirements which they have not always met and the best way to make sure they meet those requirements is through open and transparent things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else in the room?
Hi, thank you, Kathy Hughes, M-80 Fire Road 11. I would like to echo what the two previous, previous people have said. We have a lot of water concerns, especially in that part of the area. We have PFAS in some of our, our well water already. We don't know whether or not this is going to continue or they're going to bring other concerns in with some of this stuff. So I think it's really important that we keep checking on this and that is the responsibility of these, of the select board to ensure that these things are happening. So I would encourage you to say vote no on this, please.
Awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else in the room? Going once, twice, three times? Chairman Streeter, take it away.
Speaking strictly, excuse me, speaking strictly as a private citizen.
When you do that, can you tell us who you are then, Frank?
Oh, yeah.
And your address.
Frank Streeter, Bull Hill Road.
Thank you.
Speaking strictly as a private citizen, I think having review hearings is always a good thing from the town to hear from the applicant. They don't mean to be onerous, they shouldn't be onerous, but I still think it's good, a good thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else online? Kevin Hinckley.
Hello, this is Kevin Hinckley, 194 Grant Way. I am an voter to the Chisholm property with the, uh, with the ERP permit would be required. And I can tell you that this neighborhood here has many elderly people, young children and some people, including myself, with some asthma. So there are times when the, the dust here is almost unbelievable and there has been some recent litigation, but there has not been a lot of dust control. So I think that it's important that we do speak about these, these permits in open form, respectfully ask that we do not waive the right to do that.
I appreciate that, Kevin, thank you. Did you give us your address?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, did you give us your street address?
Excuse me?
Did you give us your street address? I can't remember.
I did, 194 Grant Way.
Oh, you did, yes, thank you, thanks. Anybody else? All right, um, public comment is closed. And I really feel like had I adjusted the agenda order, we probably would have saved ourselves about ten minutes. Um, because the next item is whether or not to grant the request.
You had promised me.
Oh, yes, can we just do this quick so we can satisfy a lot of people in the room and then we'll go right to you?
Sure.
All right. The next item is earth product removal permits. Chisholm and PJ Keating, the board to discuss requests from the owners and agents to waive renewal hearings. Just so folks understand, it hadn't been the practice and typically for renewals, we tend to waive the hearing, but oftentimes we don't. And as I think Chairman Streeter articulated well, every now and again, it's a really good opportunity to have, an opportunity for neighbors to talk to neighbors and for us to hear from the applicants. So I think it's perfectly, as long as they're not overly onerous, I think it makes a ton of sense to have the permit renewal hearings in these cases. And I hope my colleagues will join me in that and then we can move forward. So that's, that's the item we have. I don't know if my colleagues want to make a comment or if there's a motion.
I move that we require the hearings.
I think the motion would be that you don't, we don't waive the renewal hearings.
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
I move that we, that we don't waive the hearings for both the Chisholm and PJ Keating for their product removal.
So that's, so now you're just seconded.
I've got, okay.
He had more words, he went up. Um, all right, uh, any further discussion? Thank you to the citizens and the residents who came and who are communicating with us all the time on this issue, it's really important. All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. All right.
Hold on, sorry. Do you want them on the same night or on two different nights? I hate to put people out twice.
My preference would be the same night.
Same night.
That would be my preference.
I would vote separate nights as long as there's not time constraints.
Tiebreaker.
Separate nights. All right, well, hey. Separate nights it is, okay. Stay tuned everyone for when those separate nights will be. I had told my colleague, Mr. Gifford, that he could make a public comment himself. He is a resident and, but that, as he is an elected select board member, we are not going to give him the two-minute limit, but I am going to ask it to be reasonably timed.
Yes.
So, and please state your name and address.
Ralph Gifford, 861 George Hill Road. At our September four select board meeting, I made comments and requests that resulted in a small number of town employees filing complaints against me. The complaints were that they felt unappreciated and targeted by me. My comments and requests that caused offense were, number one, I ask that our budget goals include cost cutting. Two, I reported comments from a voter who questioned the value of some of our services. And, three, I ask that we provide town officials with direct access to town council when they needed, when they need legal advice for public records requests. I was doing my job as an elected official. Although I disagree with them, I nevertheless thanked the employees who publicly expressed their concerns at the September sixteen meeting. That's how we deal with differences in a democracy. Unfortunately, I had COVID and was unable to attend or, or I would have responded at that meeting. In contrast to the two employees who spoke at the September sixteen meeting, town council was used to bring formal complaints from three employees against me. On September eleven, I received the following letter emailed from town council. Dear Mr. Gifford, you are hereby notified that a meeting will be held before the select board on Monday, September sixteen, 2024 at six P.M. in the Nashway Meeting Room, Prescott Building, second floor in Lancaster. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss various complaints filed against you. Copies of these complaints are attached to this email. In addition, while the board will not discuss your professional competence in executive session, your character and reputation may be discussed. The meeting will be conducted in executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A1. Unless you request that the meeting be held in open session, under this same statute, you have the following rights. One, to be present at such executive session during deliberations which involve you. Two, to have counsel or representative of your choosing present and attending for the purpose of advising you and not for the purpose of active participation in the executive session. Three, to speak on your own behalf. And four, to cause an independent record to be created of said executive session by audio recording or transcription at your expense. Sincerely, Iveria Glass Freed. Ms. Freed is an attorney with the law firm Harrington Heath. As is my right, I hereby submit the town council's letter for public records purposes. After receiving the letter from town council, I was informed by town council that if I wished to exercise my right to counsel, it would be at my personal expense. I exercised my right to counsel and paid for it out of my own pocket. Sometimes there are costs to defending democracy. Throughout history, others have paid much higher costs. By contrast, my personal payment for counsel is small. My attorney advised me on my rights and wrote a letter to the select board chair, Stephen Carrigan, informing him that the action brought against me had no basis in law and was not authorized by law. The hearing was subsequently canceled. Our citizens need to know that their tax dollars were inappropriately used in an undemocratic attempt to stifle my representation of their concerns. I was duly elected by a majority of Lancaster voters. During the campaign, I spoke to hundreds of voters who expressed their concerns about our high taxes and the value of the services they get for those taxes. I was elected to bring forward those concerns. It's my job as a select board member. It's how democracy is supposed to work. The action brought against me was inappropriate and probably illegal. The money spent on town council for this inappropriate action was wasted. Money from the pockets of every resident in town.
Nearly done.
For the record, I support our town employees. I want them to feel secure. I don't want them to feel anxious or uncertain about the stability of their employment. To make that possible, we need, one, healthy town finances to allow us to spend the funds necessary to create the town we want. Two, trust from the residents of Lancaster, who in the end will need to approve every dollar of that spending. We have to work to earn and maintain that trust every time we meet. Residents need to see that we are examining town operations and striving for efficiency, precisely what I was doing at the September four meeting, to insist that there is nothing to cut in a twenty-eight million- To insist that there is nothing to cut in a $28 million budget for municipal services does not instill confidence. I welcome open conversation and healthy introspection. It helps build trust. Frittering away public money on personal vendettas destroys trust. Now, speaking to employee anxiety, multi-year budget forecasting is one of the most important tools we can use to avoid overrides, ensure financial stability, and reduce employee anxiety. The Department of Revenue recommends five-year projections as a best practice. If we care about town employees, we'll implement five-year projections in our budget. We have major expenses ahead of us. To keep our town employees' jobs secure, we need confidence that the spending we approve today will be sustainable tomorrow. We need to prioritize, plan, and schedule. We need tools to help us understand the big picture and see the long-term impact. When I represent voter concerns, as I did on September 4, it's an opportunity for the other Select Board members to present other perspectives and information. It's an opportunity for dialogue. Nobody who volunteers to serve in government should have to pay for their own counsel to defend themselves from inappropriate legal attacks, attacks using town resources, attacks meant to silence them and disenfranchise the voters who put them in office. This should never happen again. I'm an elected official. I answer to the voters. I am emailing the text of this speech to my colleagues so that it becomes a public record. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate you sending it to us, although saying it aloud made it a public record, so I appreciate that. I won't take up much more of this meeting's time on this topic, other than to say, there's just too much to, there's, excuse me?
You don't respond to public comment normally.
Thanks so much, yeah.
Mr. Chair, point of order, Mr. Chair, was that a public?
No, it was not a public comment. That's why it wasn't done in public comment, and wasn't stuck to the, thanks, thanks. As the chair, we get to decide the agenda, and I allowed my colleague because he asked to do it outside of public comment, so here it is. There is so, there's so much in, there's so much in there to respond to that it would take another full meeting to respond to it, other than to say, yeah, I, if the, I, well, I just find the whole thing incredibly insulting. But we will move on in this moment, because, yeah, there's, I intend to read through that and, and comment in full, but I am just astounded that that's how you chose to respond to the employees of this town who work so hard, who are allowed by the, who are allowed by the way to raise concerns and, and make comments, and their only ability to do that is through the complaint process that includes town council. The, by the way, the hearing was canceled, not because of any letter from his attorney, it was canceled. He was, we decided not to do it because honestly, we frankly were concerned about some aspects of the response. But that's not anything that was related to any letter from his lawyer. At any rate, I'm not going to spend any more time on it. I will, at a later date, respond after I get a chance to read through that unbelievable volume of text. Jason, do you have anything before we move on to the abutters?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it broke up your response. My question was, was that a public comment or an agenda item?
It was, he had asked to speak, and I told him I would recognize him after we were done public comment.
So was it a public comment, or was it agenda item?
It was not in the public comment section, but as a citizen, he's allowed to comment.
Okay, so it was an un, it was new business categorized elsewhere, not on the agenda?
Yes.
Not or planned for?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a topic for discussion, it's not a public comment, yeah?
That's why I discussed it, and that's why I asked you if you had a discussion.
Yeah, so we, yeah, that's probably an open meeting law violation. We shouldn't allow Select Board members to talk about topics that are not duly noted on the agenda and something for our board to consider.
It is not, but that's fine.
Anyway, that's all that I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, we're going to move on, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the rest of our meeting. So the abutter lot sales program, finally, you kind people waiting. So we are lucky, we have a number of lots that are here. There are three that have competing bids, and three that do not, or two that do not. So what I would like to do, if at all possible, so that the, the two that do not have competing bids, the two lots, at least my understanding, okay, can you, oh, got it, is, Lot 71 had one bid, and I believe Lot 78 had one bid. The lots that had multiple bidders were 31, these are 10-31, 10-108, and 10-108D. If it's the, the will of the board, I'd like to invite, if they are willing to, they weren't asked to do this in advance, but if people would like to come up and speak for one minute on their, we've received all the, folks, folks, we're off in one meeting, so if you're going to talk, you should go out in the hallway. So we're going to invite folks to come up, so, is it out in the hallway? We can't shut the door because it's a public meeting, yeah. We can't shut the door, Roy, because it's a public meeting. So just if you could take the conversation downstairs or someplace, that'd be great, yeah. All right. So, here's my proposal to the, to the Select Board, if you want to let me know, it's time. To the Select Board would be the following, that the bidders for the different properties that are contested will be given a minute to come forth, give their pitch. We were given all your materials in advance, and the Select Board, individual members, we obviously have not talked to each other about how we've viewed the different proposals, but I think it'd give, you all put hard work into these proposals. I do want, Dave Murphy has been spearheading this process for a while, he was here, oh, there he is, okay. So finally, Dave, finally we're here. And this won't be the last time we do this, which is, which is really good. So this will have a long-term legacy. So, does that sound okay for a process? And then we can discuss each property. Thumbs up, you? Thumbs up. Okay. So, for no particular reason other than it's the top of the list, I'm going to go with parcel ID 1031, and I may mispronounce some names, so I apologize. Is Cheryl Reboin here? Is it Reboin? Did I get it right? Oh my God, how fun. There we go. Would you like to come up and say a few words? Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, I had just wanted to say that Cheryl Reboin.
Yeah, and your address?
Is, my home address is 535 Page Street in Lunenburg.
So the address of the property that is apparently an abutter?
The address of the property is 14 to 20 Beach Ave in Lancaster.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Just that I wanted the use of the property to widen the driveway behind the property that I currently own, as the road going to the property is actually in front, it's waterfront, like it's along the water, just to widen the road, as my septic's right in the middle of that area behind, so I wanted to go around that.
And your lots 32 and 34, yes?
I.
Or 32 and 33?
32, 33, yes. So it was just for that, net additional parking.
Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Reboin?
Reboin.
Yes. Sorry, we're turning the heat up so that we don't freeze everyone. All right, no questions for you, thank you very much. Next, Donald and/or Kathleen Zeprodi?
Chaprati?
Chaprati, there we go. So you're Donald, I'm assuming?
I'm Donald.
And street address, that's the abutter property?
The property is 52 Speck Pond Road, Lot Number 25.
Yes.
And we're abutters. We're going only 12 feet over to 31 and 30 there. So that's why we're interested, and also I would like to have a right-of-way from Beach Grove right over to that way. Right now, we use the Cretons, which they're very fortunate, they, we're fortunate, they let us use it, so I'd like to have a right-of-way up through that way. And I think we're the longest taxpayers in the abutters. Yeah, we've been down there since the 60s. We own an acre of land from Fire Road, Alder to the water. Yeah, so we do a good job of trying to keep the camp, and right there, we have residents in it. Right now, I have family in it. So, so like I said, I got the taxpayers thing, and then we want an access road right there, you know, on the side, to be able to go up, just like the Cretons, but we don't have to use there, you know? So, I think that's pretty much it.
Does anyone have any questions?
A brief question. So you live there year-round?
Actually, we have family there, living there year-round.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I winterized it. My mother was there for three years, and then an ice storm came, and so it is winterized, so, but that's not my address, though.
No.
Right, but it's the property that's, that's.
Yeah, it's family that's living there, though.
Okay. Jason, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. You may have your seat.
Thank you.
And Rebecca Tenon.
Hi, thank you.
Hi.
So.
What's your address at the abuts?
My name's Rebecca Tenon. I'm at 19 Beach Ave. I'm abutting the property. I'm currently the only person who is a resident owner occupied, although Donnie is right, someone did move into what was previously their camp, they did just move in. I've been in my location for the last 10 years. Honestly, we're looking for it because right now, there is no actual off-street parking for my property at all. The, what would be the off-street parking was actually designed into a patio originally, and that's how we purchased the lot, so we currently use that as parking. I'm also the vice president of the association, and I have spoken with the association, and I'm sure Dave can support this. We'd like to maintain that area as parking for people to access for the water. And I love Cheryl, but as you guys know, that family did previously express interest in taking away land and putting up a fence and removing that parking, so I know as a representative of the association, we are concerned for retaining that. So I did provide a letter of recommendation from the vice pres, I mean, from the president who supports the plan to retain that. Honestly, a lot of work needs to be done on the property we're in, and we can't right now expand it because there's no which way to go, because of the size of the lot is the size of the house. In order for us to stay there long-term and, you know, start a family, we would need to be able to expand it, we would need off-street parking, so honestly, it would be an ideal solution for us for that, otherwise, you know, we'd have to probably return it back to the camp state. That's all I really have. You guys have all of my plans for it, we'd love to be able to restore it, and that's pretty much the most important part, so.
Thank you. There is, and I'm going to ask this of the other lots, you can sit down if you want. There was a question for, oh, sorry, did anyone have any questions for Cheryl? Anybody? Jason, any questions for?
Just to confirm, these are the non-contested ones, correct?
No, these are the contested ones. These, the last three people are talking about the same lot.
All right, and which lot number, sorry?
31, 10-31.
Okay, the one with three, that all three got it?
Yep. So, there was a question on the form that you all got, that said, it's toward the end, I believe, that said, if there are multiple bidders, which there are, would you be willing to split the, the piece of land? Is that, just a quick yes or no, and I'll call out your answer if you want, is there any interest in that, if that is a solvable solution? Cheryl?
Yes.
Could you be yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Rebecca? You can be no, it's fine.
It's just not, it's just not ideal for the way our property looks over that space.
Understood. And Dan, is it Dan or Don?
Donnie.
Donnie, Don.
Yes, I'm willing.
All right. Any other questions for 10-31? All right. Now, I guess I'll ask the board, is it your will to take these, hear from everybody, or deliberate and decide, and tell us your views on this one now, or do you want to do them all at once?
I'd like to do 1031 now, if that's okay.
And your count?
I'm good with that.
Okay. I open it to the boards.
I can go first. First, sorry, I'm not there personally, but all of those in the meeting, I want you to know as a Select Board member how challenging this is, right? I feel like I'm picking sides, and that's, you know, with no real basis, no true basis to try to, to try to gauge how to, how to do all that. I do appreciate everybody who's, who's willing to divide. I just want to share how I will be moving forward with this. While, while not actually binding, you know, the use that you all are requesting for this land, will be forever a public record, and it is my intention, and hopefully the board's intention, that should permitting come up to either the Planning Board or the ZDA, that that be considered, you know, judiciously, with respect to any variance or any, you know, challenge off of that. So if anybody had a, a different use that they were thinking about or considering, like, please share it now, because otherwise, I'm going to encourage the other boards to use all the information that I provided, as far as uses going forward. And, and as far as what the, what the uses are for, you know, ideally, this program is used for conserving open space, access is also positive. Anyway, I just wanted to share that of my approach going forward, and then I'll turn it over to my other board members.
Ralph, all right, I was actually surprised to learn that the Select Board would be making this decision. I had thought this would have been decided by the finance department, finance department, as I recall the wording on the, the article was, no matter, we're in this position and we have to, we have to opine. I, I went through the, I appreciate the, the form that our town administrator provided, I filled it out, and I also went, I looked at all the properties, and I took some pictures, and I tried to think about a good basis for making, making the decision. I reached the, the conclusion that, that I would decide, I would be especially swayed on a decision that would ultimately increase the property value, and therefore be more, of more value to the town. Higher property value means more tax income for the town. For this particular property, the scores that I reached based on the, the form that was provided by our town administrator, I reached a score of six for the Raboene applicant.
Reboin.
Reboin, I apologize. Nine for the Tenon, and five for Chaprati, and I'm going to correct that five to a six, so that would, anyway, the highest point total was a nine for the Tenon property, and primarily, what influenced my decision on that regard is that, that, I felt that with the Tenon applicant being able to acquire that land would do the best job of increasing the overall value, and I think in so doing, would also lift the property values of the adjoining properties. So I am recommending the Tenon applicant.
I am grateful that everybody is interested in this process and all the work that people put into this. And so I'm just, like Jason said, you know, it's unfortunate, we're not picking winners and losers here, it's just we have to score different applications and make a determination based on that, and the proposed uses are really important. And the, the proposed uses are, are really important for us, and for me in particular. So, Jason, I don't know if you wanted to, I didn't know if you, you didn't get a chance to tell your scoring. I'm glad to, to say who I would be going toward, but you went first, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
Just real quick, what was the decision on the splitting of the property? What was the?
Well, Rebecca Tenon said it wouldn't, 100%, I don't want to put words in your mouth, fit the proposed use that you would use to split, but possibly.
Yeah, because the way our properties are, we kind of, we wouldn't be able to extend if Chirpodi came back. If Cheryl wanted to extend, I think that would be the only way of working, but you would take away from it, so.
Right, so I guess the, the question was, and I should clarify this, you don't have to split with all three. You could split, you and Cheryl could split. You don't have to split all, all three. So there's a willingness, depending on how it looks and who they're splitting with, that they would be willing to split.
All, all three?
All three are willing to split, although Rebecca Tenon is saying it would be hard for them to accomplish their stated goals if all three split. But she could split with Cheryl, who's next door.
You said it would not be possible?
It would be difficult for her to achieve the goals of her and her family if all three split, but she could do it if she split just with Ms. Raboin. So. Any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Are you, do you have a stated goal? Do you want to, do you want to continue, or do you want me to go?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. So I would, I scored roughly what Ralph scored, but probably for different reasons. Large measure, a thing that weighed heavily for me was the parking available off-street, which I think families should have that option, the effort to clean it. I would encourage, if there's an ability to, because I'm also cognizant of Cheryl's having to park on the water side, and if there's a way to figure out a dual program there, then I think that would be great. But if not, then it would lean toward the Tenon property.
Would you like a motion?
Uh, well, I'd like Jason to weigh in. He is not.
Well, that's the direction I believe you also.
All right, yes, then there would, well, there would be, how do we, this is the first time you're watching, this is the first time we're ever doing this. So we're hopefully establishing some decent protocols here. How do we do this?
So you would make a motion to sell the unit, or sell the-
Hold on a second.
Make the motion to sell the parcel for less than its market value, according to the abutter lot program, to, and then say the name, or names.
And?
Have to say it's lower than market value.
Lower than market value, all right. And if we say to Rebecca Tenon, does that foreclose her, if she ends up coming up with an agreement with Cheryl, they can determine that?
That would be up to her.
That would be up to her, okay.
Yeah, you need to pick.
So the motion is to sell the lot 10-31 to Rebecca Tenon for below market value. That would be the motion.
In accordance with?
In accordance with.
The abutter lot program.
So moved, okay. Great, this is so fun. Government has it. Hold on, I need to get a second. Jason?
Second.
So typically, sir, we give a motion, a second. So do you have something you want to?
Well, I just wanted to say, I would have paid thousands for that property.
I'm gonna have to go.
Going for, it's not my business, but the city could have got $20,000 for that.
Yeah, the entire design, the entire design.
I know, it's not my business.
The entire design, the program.
I was telling you, the city lost.
I understand, it's a town, and we're a town, and we developed this program not to make money, but to help abutters and to use properties. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay. The next lot is 10-108 Jay and Lisa Dudley. Come forward.
Hi, my name is Jay Dudley. I own 11 Vincent Ave. and 5 Vincent Ave. And I have been a resident there since 1955. My dad has owned the land.
Excuse me, sir, sorry. Excuse, sir? Sir? Folks were quiet when you made your presentation, so we'd like to be quiet for the presentations happening now. Go ahead.
So my, my dad bought the land in 1953. We have sustained five generations. There are currently three generations of ultimately Dudley's living still on the property. My father and I, for almost 60 years now, on and off, have done the plowing of Fire Road 8 and Vincent Ave. We have maintained the property, actually, this 108. We've cut, when trees have fallen in, in Vincent Ave, we've cut them. I have plowed, we still plow. I plowed all the residents on Vincent Ave for all these years, and...
What's your stated, what's your intended use of the lot, if you're?
Three things. One, if I have a, we have a 70-year-old septic system, so I may be having to move that, and that's where I would move it to. I would like some extended parking, although I have parking in front of my garage. But I, I do have a tractor that takes care of all that land, so I would like to build a little, one of those corrugated stainless steel, steel buildings to port that, so I can put my other car in the garage. And the third one is just to maintain that land and possibly to build, to add some fruit trees.
All right. Does anyone have any question for Mr. Dudley? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Dudley, how close is your garage to the lot line currently?
It's right up against it.
Okay.
It has been there for, since the 60s, early 60s, so.
Do you know your lot, your lot number is?
107, 106, 104, and 105.
Yep, okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the list right. Okay, any questions, Jason?
So, so what I'm hearing, the use for is hostile septic relocation and maybe additional parking, is that accurate?
Yes, and one thing I did need, I do need to state, because I said there were three generations on there. My daughter lives in 104, 105 lots, but I, I own them. She plans on staying there, so as my wife and I get older, she, her and her husband are taking care of it, but they will, it's already been in the works for them to take over the land after I pass away.
The children will stay in the family.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
But not a, not a new residence, right? Not a second residence?
Oh, no.
No, yeah.
No, I've, since I was born in, I've been in 11 Vincent Ave. I've been there every day since, or a few years, almost every year.
There you go, some delays.
At least 65 years of it.
You've been to Clinton. Thank you. I have no questions for you.
Lot 108 is an unusual lot, in that it's actually split.
I get it.
There's actually another.
I get it.
Right in between. Would you be amenable to selling the portion that's on the other side of the, of the split?
I would be amenable, as long as it didn't somehow shut the, shut the concept down so that I couldn't get 108. But I am very happy, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
This actually goes all the way back to my dad. I'm doing this for my dad, and myself, and my daughter.
It's good information to have. Don't worry about it. It's good information to have, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Mr. Dudley? Okay, you may have your seat, and we'll be back to you. Mary Ellen Larkin.
Hello.
How are you?
Well, thank you. I'm Mary Ellen Larkin, 131 Stagecoach Road. And so those lots are about the back of my property. This is Attorney Kowal-Crotto.
Attorney Kyle Crotto, representing Ms. Larkin. Nice to meet you. So I'll start. So Ms. Larkin owns and resides at 131 Stagecoach Road. These lots are about the back of 131 Stagecoach Road. They're currently in a state of disrepair. A number of trees are rotten, fallen, and falling on other neighbors' properties. Ms. Larkin's plan would be to keep the properties as vacant lots, have a tree service come in, remove the rotten trees, fallen trees, clean up the area, clean out any debris and trash on the lots, and like I said, keep it as vacant lots. She has a quote from a tree service to do the work for $7,500, which she is willing to immediately undertake if she gets ownership of the lots. These lots are in an unusual shape, so 108, there is a break between two spots of 108. There's also 108D, which is a very tiny lot. These lots together, in this area, you couldn't, can't do much with it. You can't put up a home there, and there's not enough frontage, there's not enough acreage for a home. So Ms. Larkin's plan would be to keep it vacant, clean up the lots, which would improve the quality look of the neighborhood. If she purchases it, and if she purchases it and takes care of the cleaning, that's something the town won't have to do, and it improves the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions? Hold on, any questions? The question's from the board, Mr. Dudley.
So a quick question, so what's the, what's the documented use here, here to clear the area?
Yes.
No future use at all?
The intent is to merge it into the trees that are already there, because what has happened is many of the other abutting properties, it has been, trees have been taken down, they've been made into lots that there's just like trash and debris and so forth put there. So the whole idea was to try to clean up the neighborhood for many of my neighbors that I know that have had trouble with that.
So it's cleanup and leave as open space?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Jason?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Could we address 108D before decisions made, because there's certain relevant items that have to be brought to mention?
No, unfortunately, unfortunately, again, this is our first time doing this. We laid out the proposal, how we were going to approach it.
There we go.
That would have been a good flag. But here we are. Ralph, Jason went first last time. Take it away.
Okay. I again approached this by, well, first, I filled out the form. I ended up with a score of six for the Larkin applicant, and a score of nine for the Dudley applicant. In reaching that score, I considered what I believed would have the greatest impact on overall property values, would, as I explained before. So that, that's how I reached my consideration.
Yeah, I can, my numbers align with Ralph's. I think what I heard today, that a concern is, and I apologize if I got this wrong, but if there's a 70-year-old septic, and, and, you know, you need to, you never want, problems in that area across the board, so there always should be options. And that feels like something that will be needed in the near term. So yeah, I'm aligned with Ralph on this, thank you.
Well, you took three. So, yeah, I, I scored roughly the same as Ralph and Jason. And the septic was a big reason for me as well, making sure that we weren't creating a hazard up there. As wonderful as open space is, which I'm sure we'll have more there regardless, that was a very compelling reason for us to, for me to vote to sell it to Mr. Dudley. So is there a motion to sell lot 10-108 to Jay and Lisa Dudley? I'm sorry, I was gonna say, less than market value, I wrote that down, pursuant to the abutter lot program.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Steve, aye. Okay, we're gonna get this done. Final, so congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Dudley. Final is lot 108D, David Murphy. And then Ms. Larkin.
First of all, I own lot 109, which is connected to 108D. I also own lots 98 and 97. My house is directly across the street from lot 108D. I'm gonna kind of follow up on what Jay said. He maintains a lot of Vincent Ave. I also plow Vincent Ave. I actually purchase the gravel and everything for the road. So Jay and I both maintain this road. Lot 108F, which does split the two, which was mentioned, Jay and I have an agreement between us where we would probably work something out where I purchase a side that is next to 108D, which would, you know, make my purchase contiguous in it. I'm a little confused as to why Ms. Larkin at 114, who owns 7.79 acres, the original purpose of the abutter land purchasing was to help small landowners.
But, but we didn't, but Dave, before we go, we didn't say if you owned over a certain amount, you weren't allowed to apply to the program, so.
There's also a conservation buffer in perpetuity, separating her land from lot 108 and 108D.
We're aware of that.
Okay, and I would think that that would technically mean she's not in the butter. But whatever. My purpose for the land is, right now, I was, been using 109 for a staging area. We built a new addition. I had purchased 109 with the intent of building a three-car garage, which the ZBA would not allow because the lot was not contiguous. So that right now is a staging area. I've just built a 20, 200, pardon me, 200-square-foot wood shop there under the code minimum, which is being finished right now. We're cleaning up the staging area as I'm finished with my addition. And the use that I have for the lots next to it is to semi-clear it, as she mentioned she wishes to do. This is right across from my front door, so I have every interest in fully landscaping it and making it part of the Vincent Ave community.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Murphy? See if anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my questions are the same real quick, Mr. Murphy, which are?
Sure.
What you say is the, the only use is open space, and there's no intention to seek any variance or any additional work, is that accurate?
That is correct. I have no desire to have, I wanted a two-car or a three-car garage on 109. ZBA wouldn't let me do it, so I have built the garage next to my house. That is completely mine.
Oh, that's the one that's in 97?
Correct. That garage has been completed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have that comment. I wanted a three-car garage, and my life saved them, so.
So I have no future construction plans, other than landscaping, raised box gardens, and beautifying. So when we walk out the front door, we see a nice landscaped area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave, or Mr. Murphy? Anybody? All right, Ms. Larkin.
Hello again.
Hello, nice to see you.
Mary Ellen Larkin, 131 Stagecoach Road. And thank you, Mr. Murphy, for explaining my property. Again, it's, it's just to try to clean up the area, and I do abut it. There is the conservation in perpetuity around it, therefore, nothing can be done with it, right? It's just going to merge into the property. But I'm not looking to level trees and just have it as, as a dumping ground for things. Again, it's to try to clean it up and to beautify, so that any of the neighbors walking out of their yard are, are going to see a cleaner environment. Right, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Larkin? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like the use was just clearing it up, and I feel we need to save that, thank you.
Thank you. Ralph?
My ratings were a six for the Larkin proposal, and an eight for the Murphy proposal.
Okay. Jason?
I'm, I'm close to that. I was- I'm close to that. I'm glad everybody came to speak. I was just a date-bye, you know, walking out the front door and seeing something, right? That's a motivation out of a date there, so I'm aligned with Ralph, thank you.
Okay. It's a rarity that this board votes on three things in a row. Or three to zero. So it's a nice thing that we can agree on, so that's nice, isn't it?
It is.
Ralph and Jason, I gotta sing kumbaya after the meeting's over. Please stick around.
I brought my.
Oh, good, right. All right. Is there a motion to, I'm gonna do this right. You think I'm not going to, but is there a motion to sell Lot 10-108D to David Murphy, less than market value pursuant to the abutter lot program?
Interesting.
Is there a second? A second? All is in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Murphy. Okay. Wow. So that was a first, that's good. How's everybody feel? What else we gotta do? We have, oh, we'd have to sell the uncontested one, sorry. My apologies. What?
I think she, yeah.
She what?
Somebody's here to.
To, for the uncontested.
Yeah, 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 uncontested.
All right, we have uncontested lots, stand by.
You're muted, just in case.
I am?
No, Andrea, you're muted.
Yeah, thanks. My question is, I think on Lot 78, I received a letter that it was contested.
No.
And so I'm here to advocate for that, but if it's not, I'm happy to hear what you're saying.
I'm happy to just take the win. Yeah, no, we, no, I don't. The only listed bidder here, there's another name, but that's not.
It's Jared Rans, it's, they're both my.
Oh, then, yeah, you're the only two names, yeah. So there is one bidder for Lot 10-78, and that is you. I mean, is there anybody else, so you can state your thing, or just take the win? It's really up to you.
I don't take the win, thank you.
Okay. Is there, great, is there a motion to, is there a motion to sell Lot 10-78? Is it Andrea or Andrea?
Yeah, can I, can I share the use?
I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna just be open space, so the incentive appears. It's a lack of defense over there, it's a part of our property. So much like Dave, I'm gonna walk out the front door, not have this year's jack, and probably will take the right care of it.
Is it Andrea or Andrea?
Andrea.
Is there a motion to sell Andrea Jarrett, Lot 10-78, below market value pursuant to the abutter lot program?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then remaining, we have Lot 10-71, James and Colleen Kelly. Oh, hello. Would you like to come forward and tell us your stated purpose? I like your odds, to be honest.
She submitted a letter.
She did, we did, we got your letter, and we appreciate that.
Just to clean up the area and keep it clean, and there's refrigerators over there and all kinds of stuff on that parcel. We try to keep our side clean, and it's just, yeah, so just vegetation, keep it clean.
Well, we like your, again, we like your odds on winning this bid.
Yes.
So, yeah.
So Mr. Chair, what I heard is just to keep it open, keep it clean, and, you know, questions?
Yes. So we appreciate that. Is there a motion to sell Lot 10-71 to James and Colleen Kelly, below market value pursuant to the abutter lot program?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. I feel like a really slow, very bad auctioneer. But our auction's over, I guess. That completes the abutter lot program, so congratulations to the bidders. I usually tell this to people, if you don't win, keep trying, although this doesn't really work in this thing because unless a random lot appears out of the sky. But we do appreciate everybody for participating in this program. And I will say, before we leave this, the community up there has collectively, and oftentimes through the strong advocacy of Dave and Luanne Murphy, but collectively, you all have been advocating for yourself in a really strong way that has helped shape the policy of the town, helped us develop good programs like this, and so thank you. We want to make sure you are appreciated for the work you did to get us to this point and to allow us to have this program. So thank you all very much.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Now, after hours of sitting here and listening to us, you get to leave, which means it's sad for us because we won't have an audience, but.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, good, thanks. Come anytime, every other Monday. All right, next item, select board policies, sponsored by Mr. Gifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I thanked our town administrator several months ago. She put together some proposed changes to our select board policies, and a substantial portion of the changes were to correct the, or to also update, the non, make it non-gender specific. Previously, a lot of the regulations referred to the Board of Select Men, and referred to select men. So my recommendation for this evening is that we adopt all of those changes, all of the, the changes that our town administrator has proposed for making the policies gender neutral. And then that we defer the remaining, which are mostly pretty small changes, to a later meeting.
So I will say, I may, Kate, you can clarify this. So I don't know that we can do that, given that none of that material was in the packet. And this is, I thought this was your sponsored select board policies because you wanted to add questions, because you wanted to talk about just similar to your goals thing. I didn't realize you were referring back, since we've been tabling this for a long time.
I just always thought it was, had been assigned to me to deal with the.
No, you asked to have it on the agenda, but then there's no supporting material. If we can do it at the next meeting, have the gender-specific.
No objection.
The policy changes at the next meeting, we'll take that then. Select board goals, I will also, just to cut to the chase, since you didn't submit anything for the packet for this one, if you want us to take any action, it'll have to be at another meeting.
Okay. I will, yeah, I don't think it requires an action. I've thought about our prior discussion, and.
What, which one?
This is some, a while back. I don't remember the date now at this point. I think it was July 15. And concluded that a different approach might be helpful. So the different approach would be to consider goals that would involve benchmarking ourselves against similar towns. And tonight, I want to compare us with Sterling. Sterling's population is 8,190.
So just to be clear, this is for the select board goals?
Yes.
Yep.
Lancaster's population is 8,441, so very, very similar population. Sterling's fiscal year '24 tax rate was $13.31. Our rate was $17.46. Sterling's average family tax bill was $6,993. Ours was $8,534. Sterling's commercial and industrial property is 11.7% of their tax base. Lancaster's percentage is higher, it's 12.91%. Lancaster has more commercial and industrial tax revenue than Sterling. Notably, Sterling has trash pickup, and their electrical power and internet rates are significantly lower. Anecdotally, I'm told that Sterling's electricity and internet rates are half-hour rates. I haven't confirmed that. Sterling has more services and lower taxes. If we include what we're paying for trash pickup, electrical power, and internet, our effective taxes are even higher than Sterling's. So the way I would like to approach this with my colleagues is to, essentially to explore, what can we learn from Sterling? What are they doing that we might learn from? And how can we work together as a board to become more competitive with Sterling? I say competitive because when it comes to attracting business, they are trying to attract, I'm sure, some of the same people that we would want to attract. And given what they do with utilities, with the trash pickup and so forth, that does put us potentially at a disadvantage. So that's what I want to bring to the board. I'm happy to submit something for the next meeting, but I really would, instead of posing a specific goal, rather ask, how can we work together to learn from a town like Sterling?
So your goal is for us to learn from Sterling? I just want, because it's the category, select board goals. So I just want to understand, and it's a perfectly valid goal, if that's what you'd like it to be.
Actually, I would like to.
I'd like to clarify what your goal is.
Yeah, yes, that would be part of it, but really, it's even, it's more than that. It's that we, how can we work together to learn from Sterling?
Why, yeah. Okay. I think we're saying the same thing. Because I, yeah, go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, I'm really under, I need a couple minutes to talk, if I thought so. To react to, to the Ralph's comments. So thank you, Ralph, for thinking of ideas, but, you know, that's not really a plan. You know, to cherry pick Sterling's stats is not meaningful. I didn't hear anything in there about how or what we're going to do. And I imagine that if I wanted to go cherry pick stats about newer towns, I could probably pull plenty out too. So, you know, I'm happy to have a conversation and wish cast lower taxes, but we need a plan. We need ideas of specifics of how we're going to do it. Wishing that our taxes were lower because our neighbors are is not a plan. And asking how can we, you know, have lower taxes is not a plan either. Like, I feel like we've really talked about this ad nauseam. I mean, what is the plan? And Ralph, if you have, if you have ideas, I want to be the first person in line to talk about them. But thinking that we want lower taxes because our neighbors have them is not meaningful. So I'm trying not to be difficult on this, but I don't want to continue the conversation of we need to make cuts or we need to have lower taxes. Like, of course, we want those things, but what is the plan? Thank you.
Do you want?
Oh, happy to respond. I'm really trying to take a different approach here. I am not coming at this with, I have a plan. I'm coming at this with, how can we work together to develop a plan? And are there lessons that we can learn from other towns? When I see a town having success, I want to know what it is. I've recently met with a number of select board members from other towns, and one of the things that came up is that every town is struggling to increase their commercial and industrial base and having very little success in doing that. So this was an attempt, and one of the things I learned from one of the towns was they have adopted a policy that they never accept public ways from new developments. Our practice has been very different as a rule. We haven't adopted a formal policy in one way or another. And I mentioned that as an example of just simply, I'm just trying to learn from others. And it'll take a while to figure out plans. But if there is nothing to learn from others, then I would say then this is, there's no point.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Chair. I count three people on this call that could probably help you learn about Lancaster. That's me, Steve, and Kate, right? People who have been going through Lancaster and trying to solve these problems. And just to reiterate, like, I'm hearing you say that you don't have a plan, that you want to figure out a plan, but you're the one who voted down the goals, right? Like, that was a plan, and you voted them down. So voting goals down without having a plan and wanting to figure things out, that's great. But we're running a town, right? We're running a town who's got bills, who has staff. You know, it's really a big deal. And to kind of want to have pontification on it is not a solution. We have plans in the town, we have a master plan, we have an economic development plan. All of those select board members you spoke to, spot on. North Lancaster is how we have to figure out how to reduce the residential tax burden. That is the plan. So I'm all for talking through, if we want to tell developers in town that we never accept the public way, I'd love to see the, I'd love to see the details on that and how much money that's going to save. Some of your other platform ideas that you had about, you know, increasing meals taxes or others, happy to talk about those too. Let's, let's like come up with the plan and not say, hey, let's come up with a plan. At least, that would be, that would be my proposal. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure I heard you correctly. I have never proposed increasing meals taxes. And to be clear, my no vote on the goals was simply that I wanted to see as essentially a matter of policy to all, because I believe it helps with credibility, to always include an element of searching for efficiency, for looking at any possible ways that would make sense to trim costs. By the way, I never suggested, as has been implied, that I was advocating for reducing staff. So there's, I just simply am saying that as a matter of policy, we need to be taking a hard look. And, and again, here, I'm just saying it's, I'm just saying, let's, let's expand our horizons, looks to see what we can learn from others. I'm sensing a reluctance to do that. So.
So I can respond to that real quick. There's a lot of assumptions of facts not in evidence. I heard you say, quote, "We need to take a hard look." So I would like you to point out the people on this call who are not currently taking a hard look. Find me one. Find me one person who is not taking this job seriously and who is not, quote, "taking a hard look." Tell me who they are. Who's not taking a hard look and we need to change our policy to take a hard look? I'm here.
My purpose has been misunderstood, and I'm going to try to clarify it because I'm not a perfect communicator. My purpose is to build confidence, is to instill confidence in our town's people that it's a part of our process to take a hard look. I didn't see that, I missed it if it was there, as an integral part of our process to take a hard look. So I was advocating for that to be a part of the process so that we could communicate with the town and say, we have looked at these things.
So Jason, you ever follow through?
I'm gonna take a breath.
Yeah, so I guess my question, you just said you missed that taking a hard look is part of our process? Is it because we didn't say while we were?
I didn't see it listed as part of the goals.
Taking a hard look? I mean, it's, it is exhaustive budget process that starts the day the fiscal year begins, that goes 12 months, to come up with the best possible way to fund our government to do an enormous amount of capital projects with very little money, and doing it all while last year, I think, increasing people's taxes 17 cents or something, overall. Additionally, if you did the hard look in Sterling, I'm sure you realize they have municipal electric, which is why their electric bills are much less than those without municipal electric, so I'm sure you already knew that. I'm sure since you did the hard look at Sterling, you realize that they last year had, I think, $18 or $19 million in new growth from their tax revenue. So they can, they're allowed to not increase their tax rates. We had 3.8 million, thank you. So I'm sure when you did, when you did the hard look into Sterling, asking us to do the hard look that I think we already do, that you discovered all those things. And if you had, I just don't understand how you thought it was an apples-to-apples comparison. I guess my larger question is, this, this, we started this conversation in July, and between July 15 and October 21, your goal that you've developed since in July proposing a decrease in a tax rate without knowing the dollar value attached to it, no hard look there. Between then and now, three months and a week, you've come up with stats from Wikipedia on Sterling and compared them to Lancaster. So I think that. So I, I think the townspeople do need people to do hard look, which is what we ask Kate and the staff to do all the time, which is how they grind out these budgets. They do everything they can to keep us from increasing people's taxes where we don't need to. And we do exhaustive research into debt, into capital, into operating, all of those things while dealing with 68 cents on the dollar that isn't our control and part of the town fighting any new development possible. So I think it's just, we, I think fundamentally, we have a, a different definition of what a hard look is. And I frankly, you know, if we're gonna, I'm glad to talk more about select board goals at a future meeting. But other than looking at the statistics of one town over another that don't actually tell the full story, I'm not interested in having that conversation. Anything further?
Yeah, well, just, just queerly quickly, like, let's talk about a goal. Like, let's, Ralph, if, if you want to bring something forward, fall for it. Let's debate it. Let's deliberate. But to, to insinuate, to insinuate that we're not taking a hard look or that the process isn't taking a hard look, like, that's, that's disingenuous. And, and that's my opinion. And, and maybe that's not your intention. I hope that's not your intention. But that's how your words are coming off, is that you're criticizing the process without having any proposal for how to do things different. And I, I just think it's a bad look for this board. Thank you.
And I will say, we've seen time and again, we just saw three members of our finance committee here tonight exhaustively well researched and have, having taken a hard look at our capital budgets. And they do the same with our operating budgets. We see Kate and the team here doing the same. We see the library folks who are, who are going down to trying to figure out, brick by brick, how to exhaustively do the hard look into saving us money on expenditures that we need to do to preserve historic buildings. I would just say, if you, if you've got a goal other than a catch raise, then let's hear it. Otherwise, let's have another meeting scheduled to talk about select board goals. Our goal, I want to state this for the fact, so just so folks know at home, I take a hard look at all of the decisions we have to make on this board. I have since the day I got elected and I will until the day I'm off this board. And I hope all of us do. I hope you don't feel we have to say it over and over again. This budget process is arduous. It is constant. It is not just when we present the budget to a town meeting. It is not just when we present it with the finance committee. It goes on all year round. We are working hard. I got elected with the stated purpose of trying to reduce the increase on people's property taxes. I never said we were going to be able to cut them because it's really hard to do. And I think taxpayers understand that, when 68 cents on the dollar isn't in our control. So I, I used to tell people who work for me all the time, don't come into my office with a problem if you don't have a proposed solution. I, I've said for decades, I'm in the solutions business. We as elected officials have to be in the solutions business, not in the finger pointing business. And, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to have a long-term goals conversation, but it's got to be about actual stated goals, not just think hard about Sterling. So I want to meet you where we could get real goals, but I don't think we're there.
I think your positions are clear. We, we disagree and I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Jason?
All set.
Sounds good. Number five, special acts of 2002, finance provisions, Article 5 and 6, tabled from the special town meeting. This is a policy decision, yes?
This is a policy decision. So there were a couple of things that were said that evening. One of them, someone asked about a personnel board.
And that evening being the special town.
I'm sorry, yes. Excuse me. I had forgotten, because I didn't bring the town code with me, that the, the Personnel Bylaw that was passed in 2023 effectively got rid of the Personnel Code that was in there. And with that went the Personnel Committee, which is why it isn't referenced online. So I think that I didn't answer that completely, which, you know, we can do if, if it was asked again. The other thing is this simply was to align practice to the code, but it isn't required. As a matter of fact, I went back and checked and then I was able to talk with the AG's office. And the way that the Finance Director's statute is written is that it gives the board the latitude to either have that person as a member of the bylaw or on a contract. Obviously, our current director preferred the bylaw. I think a lot of employees prefer the bylaw because it provides, you know, some regularity and.
Protections.
Protections. And also, you know, sort of has everybody on an even keel, depending on, you know, where they land. So it is the board's decision whether he would like to go through the process of changing this or not. I can tell you there's seven or eight other ones in the pipeline that are things that are in the code that we don't do. Again, this was just something that I thought was going to be able to be put forward so that we were consistent. But again, it's a policy decision, how much you, you want to do. One is like the inspector of fences. We don't, that isn't a thing. That you have a committee for the disposition of equipment. That isn't a thing. Chapter 30B from MGL has taken that over. And there was a lot of conversation about the, the MCPPO, so the purchasing officer, sorry. So if y'all want to, you know, talk about that, you can. You are allowed to delegate that if you want. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. I actually just had to renew mine last week. It is a 50-hour course just to renew it and a pretty arduous timed test. So I think that the town deserves somebody who goes through the program and can pass the exam to do their purchasing.
Okay. So my, my request would be particularly on those Articles 5 and 6. If you could present us with, and I can talk to you about this, but I, I would like us to move forward and move those to bylaw positions because we do have a potential of a retirement soon. And I don't know that we'll, we don't want to stick with the, and since it's a policy decision for us, I'd like us to.
Yeah. To be clear, you already did that.
No, I know.
Well, not you, but several boards prior to you.
But let's just clarify that.
Yep, I will have something by next week.
That would be my preference. Any objection from anybody?
Is there a financial impact?
No.
And you mentioned a retirement.
Cheryl's told us she's just going to retire.
I made a retirement, so there's an impact on retirement for this?
No, she, so the reason why we brought it to the special town meeting, which we explained to the special town meeting, was because people have said it should be considered at the annual town meeting. And we said we brought it to that because there was an impending retirement and we needed to be able to act on it. We do have the ability to act on it. We wanted to bring it to the town. But given the impending, impending retirement of Cheryl, I think we just need to move forward.
Is there, is there a cost impact, a retirement cost impact on us? In other words, if there is a change, do we become responsible for funding a retirement?
We are always responsible for funding retirement.
Right. So is?
So the way that raises are afforded to retirees is that as the position, as it's classified, moves up. So for example, if you were the town clerk in 1950, likely you were not making the same pay as the town clerk in the year 2000. And so the pay that you're afforded as a retiree is increased as the pay here in the town increases. So if you retire as the town's accountant, that would be at a different rate than if you retire as the finance director. However, the town already took those steps, the select board, probably more than 10 years ago, to make that change for the current incumbent. What I was trying to figure out is whether or not that would deter other people from wanting to come to take the job when they are reading that there's two entities here. It, it tends to be a deterrent for people to come to a community if they feel like the position isn't solid. Now, we can obviously explain that at an interview. There can be a supplement if and when there's a recruitment to explain that. But I just was hoping to align the town code with what's currently in practice. But it, it's a nicety. I don't think it's a have to.
Thank you.
Okay. Hawthorne Lane update and review, there is no?
I don't have anything right now, unfortunately.
Uh, general fund, budget updates and forecasts for FY '26? Anything?
This was informational only, only to say that I talked to Chairman Trussell and they are all set for the January date that you all had picked. So we're supposed to be getting the first iterations of the budgets from department heads at the end of the month. Cheryl and I, once she's back, we'll, we'll go through it or I'll start and clue her in when she gets back. So you guys will likely have a first iteration probably in a December meeting.
Sounds good.
Just to absorb it before you go into the January meeting.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda. Any questions on that? Okay. Next item on the agenda is an appointment, Community Preservation Historical Commission.
Move to appoint Amanda Kelly, historical commission representative, to the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second? And where, I think we're just confirming or affirming or something. But yes.
All second. I did not see any information about her qualifications in the package.
It's not an appointment to make. We're just affirming it. The Historical Commission has chosen her to be their representative.
She's fair.
I would suspect so, since the Historical Commission made her their representative. All's in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Application for use of the Town Green gazebo.
I move to approve application for use of Town Green gazebo. Date of activity, Friday, December 6, 2024. Time, 6:30 PM to 8 PM. Name, Lancaster 4H, Judy Zulejack. Event, annual tree layer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, aye. Okay. Ms. Laney's correspondence and memorandum. I have none. The next select board meeting will be held on Monday, November 4, 2024. And now I will entertain a motion to enter an executive session.
I move to enter executive session. Select board to meet executive session pursuant to MGL, Chapter 30A, 21A, for the following purposes. I, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to threat litigation against the town by fire department retirees Christine Monahan and Gormon Diaz, pursuant to Section 21A 3. As the chair has determined, that discussion in open session would have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. I, aye, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Lancaster Historical Society. Counterclaim plaintiffs versus the Parrygan and Jason Allison, counterclaim defendants. As the chair has determined, that discussion in open session would have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. And not to, and not to recommit in open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Steve, aye. We are going to executive session. Thank you all.